Get started right off the bat, Lee. We're gonna go ahead and get started with our four o'clock work session today. May I put the jury to roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Colvin.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Lynn.
Here.
Mr. Morrison.
Here.
Mr. Welper.
Here.
Mr. Hurd.
Motion for the agenda.
Take it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. You have an agenda. We are here today to talk about the parking situation that we've got in Waterloo. And we have been discussing for many weeks, if not months, the outsourcing of our parking facilities. There's been lots of steps taken in that process today. We have some gentlemen here from one of those that has submitted a proposal for us. I think, Craig, are you gonna start it today? We'll start with Craig Clark, our building official, and we'll kinda go from there. Go ahead, Craig.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just kind of a brief overview of the parking in Waterloo. So, it actually, Mayor, was probably over a year ago, because we were actually at the Center for the Arts when we had our first public meeting on this.
Okay.
It was there at the Center for the Arts that we basically came before council. And when I say "we," the city staff that's basically been working on this is Suzie, myself, and Sandy. We came before you guys and gals and just asked if you would like us to even pursue this. So, it was kind of brought to that meeting that you would like us to at least go get some RFPs, look at them, see how their operations work compared to our operations, and bring that information back to you. It has kinda been a long time in the making, and that's probably mostly my fault, because somebody has to keep that moving, and I probably have slowed that down from time to time. So, that's where we're at today now. So, just kind of a brief, brief overview of our parking we have in the city of Waterloo. Just so you know, we have kind of, it's basically divided up into two departments: clerk's office and traffic operations. My role in this whole parking thing is capital improvement. And my role in this whole thing probably will not change a whole lot. The capital improvement will still go through our capital improvement process. We will still own the ramps. We will still be required to do any sort of capital expenditures, all that type of stuff that we do today. So, to start off, what actually we're talking about here. Parking operations is divided between the clerks and the traffic operations. Clerk's office is in charge of issuing permits, collecting the fines, leasing the stalls, doing all the staffing at the booths, and any security staffing we have. The traffic operations is required for any maintenance for on and off-street parking. That is one thing that I wanna make sure we kinda describe here. We are talking about the on-street parking and the off-street parking. So, it's the meters and the parking ramps themselves, and also some lots that are basically monthly parkers. Traffic operations control the parking equipment, control all the general day-to-day maintenance. I went out today and just took, we thought visuals, and you guys have all these in your package. This is more just to see. But we've had a lane close for quite some time. This is one of our cashier stations we have out there. Well, it's actually the only one we have. You know, we don't accept credit card. We can't have bills larger than $10. Not real convenient for either the citizens of Waterloo or people visiting our city. Also, the gate is up a lot of the time. So, this is a picture of the gate being up today when I was there. Also signage on it. Then we got everything from just small, you know, menial maintenance, which is, this computer's in a garbage truck. Of the, you know, bird nest above a light, to garbage in the parking ramps, the paint peeling on the courier parking lot, and then larger things where we start talking about, you know, rebar showing, decaying concrete. So, just a quick overview of the actual budget that was adopted by the city of Waterloo here just not too long ago. Those two departments we talked about, both have budgets involved. There's two parking maintenance full-time staff person. There's one city clerk position, and then two part-time meter positions for a total salaries of $290,166. Then we go on from there. The total expenses for those two combined is $409,896. Total revenue for this next year budget is $526,000. So, we show a net grand revenue of $116,000. Just one thing with the city, I just wanna point out that it is hard to show exact direct cost for all departments, because there's things that overlap. Obviously, my time, Suzie's time, Sandy's time, none of that's accounted for in any of those budgets. The snow removal equipment, the truck, the vehicles, any sort of major equipment they have, and then also the maintenance staff that's in my department does work on those two. That is not figured in at all in that budget. That's all I kinda wanted to give you, a brief overview. And I'm gonna turn it over to Republic Parking to talk to you a little bit about their company and their proposal. I'm not sure who said it, but hopefully this works better for you.
Craig, it's flashing on our side nonstop.
I know.
Good afternoon.
My name is Brian Kern. I'm a vice president for Republic Parking. I've been with Republic now for 18 years. And Republic in 2016 will be our 50th year. And just to give you a little background, the difference between Republic Parking and other parking operators, we are not a volume operator. We're more of a niche operator. In the mid-'90s, our late owner brought several of us over from some of the other companies, and pretty much told us that he wanted us to be a quality operator, not a volume operator. And the reason that was so nice to hear is because a lot of times when you're running around trying to build parking operations and get new ones, it's hard to run them the right way. That philosophy has allowed us to pretty much become the largest parking operator in North America for the municipal division. We have not only the 36 municipal on the urban side, we also have approximately 65 airports on the municipal side. And that's where we come up with the largest municipal operator. As you can see, a lot of these locations, a lot of them were smaller ones. We built them into being very large ones. A lot of them have started just like what we have here in Waterloo. There's a lot of times where, you know, we were there just to help them, and as we got started, they had asked us to do more. And it just evolved into quite a few things. As some of the budgets from some of the cities started being cut from the police department, we also got into the on-street operations. And we're also now the largest on-street operator of the parking industry. By putting the money back into the system and being a quality operator, these are just some of the things that make us a little bit different than our competition. And the big ones here, the cutting-edge technology. Parking departments have changed drastically over the years with the way technology has changed. And by us putting the profits back into the system, we're able to bring a lot of new technology to the parking systems. John and Dana will be talking to you a little bit about that today, of what they wanna do here in Waterloo. But that's very important. Another big thing that we were able to do is, several years ago, probably about 10 years ago now, we realized the importance of actually having our own IT personnel, because sometimes with the distributors, it was very difficult to be able to get the equipment working. And, you know, in a lot of cases, the equipment just wasn't working. The gates were up, just wasn't working. The credit cards weren't being processed properly. By having our own IT department, which we wanna have here also, we're able to make sure that the equipment that we purchase for you is working at all times. All equipment will go down. The luxury of having those guys is we get it back up and running pretty quickly. But the last thing that I wanna tell you, and I'll let John talk about what he did in Cedar Rapids, we don't wanna just be your operator. We wanna build you a parking program, and we've been very good at that. We've done that at a lot of these locations across the country. And what we find is, you can't just give a person a parking space. You have to give them more. And we've been able to do that, to where people, they don't have a problem paying a little bit more for those parking spots, because they understand there's a lot more that goes into it. Once you start having that revenue come in, and we've been able to increase, in some cases, profits over a million without any rate increases, we put that money back into the system to make sure that your garages are looking good and they last longer. We've gone into some cities where they were talking about pulling a garage down, and that garage is still sitting there 25 years later. So, I'll let John talk a little bit about what he did in Cedar Rapids, 'cause it kinda all fills into what we wanna do here in Waterloo.
Hi, I'm John Rouse. I'm currently the general manager in Cedar Rapids. Something that we would really like to see with any parking operation is, you know, a local branding effort and creating a clear, identical image related to the parking system. This works, you know, in several different ways, but really this helps drive some of the, I guess, visitor traffic and, you know, monthly traffic into the facilities where you primarily want people. It also kinda works as a tool for those who may not know where parking is located that are, you know, new or visiting Cedar Rapids, to some of those areas on-street as well. So, by doing a, you know, and creating a strong marketing campaign, this gives us really the opportunity to do some additional community outreach, talk to the stakeholders in downtown, the business owners, those are, you know, who are, the parking operation is impacting with their customers. You know, we've done this in a variety of ways, with different advertising campaigns, commercials, radio ads. But creation of a, you know, kind of a centralized website has been a very effective tool for us in many communities. You know, we put up there Main Street Waterloo, so identified that as, you know, kind of one of the key stakeholders in downtown who, you know, my understanding is they have done an excellent job with community outreach. We'd like to, you know, work with that group and kinda piggyback off and offer them, be able to work with the downtown, you know, business owners, stakeholders, to get their, you know, feedback and insight on, you know, what parking issues they're facing in the downtown area. We've also used parking very, as an economic, tool for economic development, very successfully in some other communities. This is not just only a validation program, where validation programs, if you've had experience in some other communities, it might be, you go into a hotel, for example, and they validate and pay for that customer's parking. That's a great tool that businesses can provide and extend to their customers. But we're really trying to focus on big-picture items, and how parking can actually be used as a catalyst for economic development to help bring businesses to downtown, or assist businesses in staying downtown. So, some of these parking incentive programs that we've created, you know, we create these all the while maintaining the bottom line. So, the parking system is not, you know, might be subsidizing these to a certain extent, but we're still, you know, getting some revenue out of this, so we can reinvest those revenues back into the system to address things like technology, capital improvements, things like that. Here's just a few examples of some parking incentives that we've created. Entrepreneurial incentive, new jobs, so those, you know, bringing new jobs into downtown. You know, large employers, parking cash-out, which is a very effective incentive tool to help make mobility and demand management. You know, park and live, you know, those that are living and residing in downtown, you know, they're already paying the cost of, you know, rent in downtown. How can we work with, you know, that group to, you know, make parking affordable for them? And then park and learn. And so, in some college and university towns, we've developed programs to help assist, you know, college students that are, you know, working in the downtown areas. We are proposing to bring a lot of new technology that's not currently existing. One of those things, these are, you know, of course, all optional, but they're, you know, a component to really help drive some of the, you know, really the success of a good program. We propose the multi-space meters in some of the facilities, pay-by-phone. There's, I guess, you know, pay-by-phone today, there's the misconception that, you know, you have to have these brand-new, updated, you know, fancy parking meters to do pay-by-phone. That's just simply not the case. With what you guys have existing, we can actually bring you pay-by-phone today. Pay-by-phone, and you don't have to have a smartphone. You can do this with, you know, the regular old, you know, flip phones. I mean, this is really just something that, and well, in addition to that, it'll also allow you to pay by, you know, credit cards. A lot of times, we're finding people don't have, you know, three, two, three, four dollars worth of change in their pockets anymore. It's just the nature of, you know, how, you know, times are changing. So, this actually allows, gives you the ability to accept credit cards, not only in the parking facilities, but on the street as well. Dashboard, and, well, parking access revenue control system. So, this is the gate system that, you know, essentially regulates parking, allows people in the facilities, lets them out, you know, things like that. A dashboard, we're very proud of something that we've recently worked on, and we've implemented in Cedar Rapids. We've actually created a centralized command center and dashboard that allows us to see equipment and personnel deployed in the field. And so, if there is an issue or someone needs customer service, we can deploy, we can see that person or piece of equipment in real time. We can deploy, you know, personnel in the area to go provide that customer service. So, you know, it's more of a proactive tool. On the reactive side, though, we can get folks there within a very short amount of time to provide that customer service. We provide our ambassadors, well, we take the ambassador approach, and, you know, ambassadors that are out on the street, we provide them with tablets. Now, you know, these tablets can be used to issue citations and, you know, look at the dashboard and things like that. But in addition to that, we've taken it a step further. We actually encourage our ambassadors to show visitors, you know, restaurant menus, for example, or provide, you know, additional maps. And so, by providing them these tools, they can, you know, essentially, you know, take customer service to a whole new level. So, you know, we're really proud of that. Citation management. You know, inherently negative function of any parking system is writing citations. We realize that. But it's a necessary function of any successful parking operation in downtown. You know, by doing that, I mean, their, an effective tool is to create and encourage that turnover, so other visitors or other customers can have access to those spaces. But one thing we don't wanna ever do is leave a bad taste in somebody's mouth. You know, you're a visitor to Cedar Rapids, you come downtown, you know, once a month, you get a parking citation. You leave, that's, I mean, that's a bookend experience. You're gonna say to yourself, "Well, I'm never gonna go back downtown again." You know, that's, that's what happens. Well, with what we're proposing, we can actually see a historical record of if that person is a, you know, habitual offender in this particular case. So, we see that, we can say to ourselves, "Okay, they're not in our system. Maybe they don't, didn't understand the system." Or maybe we just provide them a friendly reminder in lieu of an actual ticket that says, you know, "Thanks for coming downtown. Here's an extra 15 minutes." I mean, that's the type of stuff that, you know, people remember. They remember that, and they appreciate that. And I've gotten, I can't tell you the number of compliments I've got from people coming into downtown Cedar Rapids that didn't understand the new technology, said, you know, "Thank you for, you know, for that."
Good afternoon. My name is Dana Klein. I'm a district manager with Republic Parking, and part of my responsibility is Iowa. On the next couple slides, I wanna talk about the key to our whole program, which is our people, our ambassador program that works in many municipalities. What this does is takes the, what you think of as the parking person kind of out of the booth, out of the garage atmosphere, onto the street, where they're more of an ambassador. Granted, they're issuing the citations, but they're also, like John said, they're helping you with questions about downtown. They learn about the downtown. They learn about the businesses and the folks that are down there, and places to put visitors or help them with paying the meters if they need help with those meters. They'll also help them with, you know, what events are going on at the event center or at where the local hotels or restaurants or any of those types of things are. Very key to the program. They'll typically walk a certain route. They're walking it with, in the bottom right-hand corner there, those tablets that John talked about with the dashboard on them. With those, once we program those with our dashboard program, they can see where all the meters are that are through town, and they can see kind of a occupancy. They can see where there are open spaces. So, if someone doesn't know where there's a spot, they can pop these up and say, "I'm showing about 220 spots available at this garage," for instance, and kinda help them get over toward that area if that's what they're looking for. Those will also issue citations, obviously. But we want them out on the street. We want them interacting with the people in town, kind of, kind of helping generate Waterloo customer service. Maintenance, our other key component to our focus is our maintenance team. They're trained to assist, and all of our folks are kinda cross-trained, but these guys do an especially good job of knowing all of those facets of working at a garage or working at a surface lot, you know? That's an oil spot, I need to take care of that right now. I need to make a list of all of the painting projects or things that need to happen, and what kinda critical needs are, do they need to take care of that day in an oil spot, or, like I said, an ice situation? They'll take care of those immediately, and then they'll get to their regular maintenance. And they're very good at using all the different equipment. And our folks in Cedar Rapids and in Lincoln are, you know, they'll pressure wash the whole garage from top to bottom. They understand how to use all that equipment from the hot-seas with the, you know, tanks on them to just regular pressure washing supplies. And I think Brian's gonna finish it up.
This portfolio, we're pretty proud of that, because, again, this is something that we can do for cities that other companies don't do. There's a lot of things, as far as from any type of consulting, whether it be for revenue increases or to improve the garage aesthetics, to, you know, even the design work. We do a lot of that stuff in-house, and that's just part of our management fee. Anything that you typically would hire out to the parking consultants, and there's a lot of them out there, these are things that we can do for you in-house. We've got the expertise back in the corporate office, and we also have it locally, to where we can produce a lot of these reports for you pretty quickly. The marketing, as John was talking about also, again, if, you know, for us to be able to build you a parking program, we need to do it the right way so that everybody buys into it. This kinda stuff can be done both locally and, again, back in our corporate office, and we can do it at a much cheaper rate than what you can typically go out and pay for at your local design places. The graphic signage, you know, there's a lot of things out there that change over the years as you're running parking operations. You need to be able to make sure that your, the people, the patrons using the facilities understand what they need to do. We're really good at being able to design that. We bring it to you. Again, it's our job to recommend and give you that, those ideas. It's basically up to you, though, to say, "Yes, go with it or not." We understand that sometimes budgets are tight. We've gone really slow on some things, and we've gone really quick on some things. And what we've been pretty good at over the years is, because of the operations we've been able to bring up to speed into the 21st century, you know, we've been able to put that money back into the parking operations and do a lot of the stuff that you see here pretty quickly. They, at the very end, that analysis with the utilization analysis, again, we know there's not a lot of cars in some of the garages right now, but we will give you that analysis and give you the recommendations to be able to build that parking program. That's pretty much what we have.
Very good. Thank you, Brian. Let's, let's start. I know, Craig, do you have a finish?
I just wanted to bring up kinda one point. I kinda left it till the end here, so just kinda start back where I started from. You guys had asked, we go out for RFPs, so we have done that. We received two of them, Republic Parking and ABM Parking. A selection, a few of us went and visited both their facilities in Des Moines and in Cedar Rapids, have talked with them several times, and that's why Republic Parking is here now, to kinda present to you guys, it is our recommendation to go with Republic Parking from our group that has looked at this. One other thing is, I couldn't believe, actually, that Waterloo would be interested, that people would be interested in parking in Waterloo. We actually had four companies come to town, look over our parking situations, but only two did provide us proposals, so.
Very good, thank you. Council, let's, I know there's other folks out here that would like to speak, I believe, but let's, maybe we could ask questions, if you have any, of Craig or of the gentleman from Republic Parking to get started.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Welper.
Brian, or I'm not sure who to ask this question to. We've talked before that there's no such thing as free parking. Somebody has to pay for building or maintaining that parking. Yet we have a number of events in Waterloo which are just big, empty lots that people park in, so there's no charge. So, the charge falls on the taxpayer rather than the user. Have you had this same situation in other cities where you've been, and how did you deal with it?
We have. We've had that in a lot of situations. And you're right, there's no such thing as free parking. There's a lot to it. I mean, with the liability risk of people walking on the lot, the safety, all the lighting, you know, it gets pretty expensive. And we typically say, you know, most operations, it costs you probably about $500 a space to be able to run these, and, you know, you're spending $22,000, $24,000 to build these. We have had cities to where they had the free parking. The city of Dearborn, Michigan, was one to where it was all free, and we put up, you know, things in place to where we could start charging for that event parking. And, you know, they weren't happy about it at first. Nobody's ever happy about it at first. But because of the marketing we do and the customer service programs that we put in place, we explain that to people. Once you explain things to people, they have a much better understanding. They don't have a problem paying that $3, because they have a, they get why you're having to do it. We also had a facility down in Colorado Springs. It was an event operation. It was an arena, and nobody wanted to pay for parking, because, you know, down in Colorado Springs, not many people pay for parking. Well, we immediately started charging three, and we had a lot of people complaining. By the time that we were able to explain things, you know, by the middle of that first year, we weren't getting any complaints anymore. A few years later, we bumped it to five. We didn't have any complaints when we bumped it to five, because people were conditioned to understand that you do have to pay for a product. So, yeah, we've run into that quite a few times.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lynn.
In Cedar Rapids, who does your company report to? Who's the official that gives you directions for operations?
It's called DPMI. I'll let John talk. It's kinda changed.
Yeah, we have a little bit of a unique situation in Cedar Rapids. So, what the city had decided to do was actually lease the parking assets to a downtown group, and they're known as Downtown Parking Management, Inc. It consists of, you know, five board members, they're business owners, they're involved in the community, and that's who actually we report to. So, we have a contract with DPMI. Ultimately, I kinda look at it as, you know, I really, I have two clients in Cedar Rapids, you know? I report directly to DPMI, but I work with the city directly on a lot of different issues. They are the owner of the assets. But, you know, if, to very simply answer the question, I'd report to the DPMI board.
Then, maybe Craig, that's a question for you. Your committee, who would they report to in Waterloo? What official that would report to you, or, I mean, there's gotta be one person takes responsibility for them.
Go ahead.
The administration of the contract would be ran out of my office initially, and then we would analyze it as we go, simply because I do all the parking contracts now for all of the other entities. Right now, I do security contracts, I do the temp agency for the booth cashiers, and then I run the administration. So, they would report to the clerk's office initially, and then we'd analyze as we go. But there would still be input from all the other offices, obviously, that would need to. I mean, Craig's office will still be thoroughly involved because of the capital improvements.
Sure. Well, what we don't want is to have five fathers.
Correct.
We want one person they go to.
Or seven. Yes.
And there was a suggestion early on in this process, Tom, that we do form an entity like DPMI. And I think that certainly is something that we need to look into.
Now, why did Cedar Rapids do that, may I ask? Why, is, what advantage?
Well, in this particular case, we were looking to privatize the system, and we really wanted to take, I guess, advantage of some of that low-hanging fruit. And I think that, you know, sometimes, you know, we're all involved in city processes, and sometimes those can take time, and we understand that. and sometimes those can take time and we understand that. In certain situations, we wanted to just be able to, you know, take advantage, make decisions quickly, you know, I didn't have to go, we weren't going to go through, I guess, formal council approval on every little issue that, you know, the council had better things to address at that time. We were in flood recovery mode, you know, what makes sense to make this change? And so, you know, in, let's see, we started the process in 2010 and then in 2011 is when we actually, you know, implemented it and DPMI was essentially born. So that's kind of how we did that. I still do go through city processes for certain things like large capital improvement projects. So that's something that still, you know, I work with an individual designated at the city to do trust repairs or, you know, things like that, large projects.
Mr. Warset.
Yes. Several questions. You guys have looked at the Waterloo system that we have here and have probably crunched the numbers, I suspect, and I'm wondering if it's possible to divide it into administrative costs to the city, labor costs to the city, and then capital costs to the city, if you could, if you have numbers to that effect. Also, I'm wondering how many ambassadors for our city you're talking about being used to adequately do the job as opposed to how many managers? And then for sure, what to me is the most important thing, other than the quality of service, is the salary and wage differences and how wages would increase for the people that are actually out there walking the pavement, doing the job and that, and any kind of benefit package. Next thing would be, what is the contract period that you're talking about? And then finally, what would the bottom line be as far as if you know our parking costs per customer at this point in time, how would that change and what would it be? I know that's a lot, but, sorry.
I think we started with a number of ambassadors. Is this the optional one? Okay. So for off-street and on-street personnel, we had talked about three ambassadors, one of those working as an ambassador maintenance, so they would be cross-trained and be able to do that at any time. Those were all full-time positions at 13 per hour wage. Our benefit package includes health insurance option, sick days, vacation days, holidays, obviously, and, what else is there? Sick, vacation, holiday, okay. And then for on-street personnel, we had one enforcement person and then a technician collector that would be separate. Those were both at 13 per, wages of 13 per hour, 38.75, which is full-time essentially. So we put all those positions at 13 per hour. For management, we had a project manager, an area manager, and an accounting manager. And our thought process with that would be, the project manager would be daytime or the high time of when they would need to talk with customers and folks from, that they report to. The area manager would be able to work the event times or the evening times and the accounting manager would be separate of the collector to make sure that there was a custody, chain of custody with the money involved in the collections of the meters and in the collection of the cash and everything from the machines.
And what would their salary or our?
We had those, I'd need to divide this by 2080, but we had the project manager in at 45, the area manager at 33, 280, and the accounting manager at 35,000. So to get the hourly, just take those and divide by 2080 is our typical number that we use for a full-time person.
Is there, and has, is there a history of promotion within your company?
Yes. We have a great tenure. Folks that come into, typically in parking, it's a high turnover business, but with our company, we've been able to retain folks and our turnover's lower by offering these higher wages to start and then rewarding them through increased, you know, merit raises periodically. And there's also great training with the company, which obviously helps them in moving on and up in the company as well.
And would the administrative costs then be the combination of those three managers and that would be it? Would that be the administrative cost? Or, and would be any, would there be any capital costs at all?
I'm not sure, you got that? Okay.
Well, I guess, within our proposal, we provided a couple of options. We would make the recommendation that, yes, there would be capital costs and it's important, I think, at this point in time that those are considered because that is also going to help drive revenues, that is also going to help provide customer service. You know, back to your, you know, your personnel and staffing question, you know, even though there's management staff and, you know, technician collector, everybody's considered an ambassador. We have it labeled as, you know, you're an enforcement ambassador, but really, everybody in the operation is an ambassador. They are not an ambassador just for the parking operation, they're an ambassador for Waterloo, they're an ambassador for downtown. So that's something to, you know, something that we're very passionate about, that everybody's trained to be able to provide this customer service. It's not just two people within the operation, it's everybody. But back to the capital improvement, so, you know, some of the things like the tablets, some of the things like the multi-space parking meters and the off-street structures, eventually the parking access and revenue control system, I mean, it's reaching its end of life, it just is, it's older, it's going to have to be replaced. I mean, and that will also provide you really with some effective reporting tools. It's not just regulating parking. I think, I usually actually take and provide a lot of this data that we've collected with citations and transactions on the meters and the pay-by-phone, that's kind of a temperature gauge of downtown. And if you want to be able to take that temperature gauge, you're going to have to have, you know, some of these upgrades. You can't, there's just no effective way, I don't think, to do it today without, you know, doing it manually, which is obviously going to, you know, take time and money and effort to pay somebody to be out there to do that. So, you know, with the capital improvements, though, we also don't have to do this overnight. You know, there is a cost associated with that, we get that. Does it make sense to, you know, do a few of these improvements, all the while doing some public outreach, working with the downtown stakeholders, letting them know why we're making these decisions and why we need this equipment and what it is and how it's going to benefit their customers, and then move forward with some of those additional purchases? So maybe it makes sense to purchase the citation system and the dashboard today, maybe it makes sense to purchase the park system or, you know, a year from now. There's a lot of options there and we really would defer to you, our client, if we are selected, to help us in that decision-making process. Within the proposal, we've made really, I guess, the as-is proposal and then we've made an upgrade model. That can kind of be picked à la carte, however, you know, it needs to be done to meet budgetary constraints, you know, what the public wants, what the business owners want, things like that. So there's a lot of options there. I guess what we just provided you was kind of, here's everything or here's more or less nothing, where do you want to go with it? So, you know, it would be probably my recommendation that we do, you know, again, some of these things, you know, at the 30, 60, 90-day mark, again, at the, you know, 180-day mark, here's what we would like to see, or that we're recommending at the, you know, one-year and two-year marks. And this, you know, this stuff takes time, it's not going to go from, you know, from bad to great overnight, we understand that. I've been working down in Cedar Rapids for, is my seventh year, sixth year, seventh? I lose track. But anyway, we've come a long way. I mean, it was a community, I got there and they literally had no parking access and revenue control system either, it wasn't working, it was damaged a year prior to that in the flood. You know, today I've got all-new parking access and revenue control systems, I've got 15, two new multi-space parking meters. You know, we're, you know, the system is sustainable today. We're running in the red, as I understand, the city was running in the red about a million bucks a year down there before we got there. As soon as we got there, we were able to turn that around, starting in 2011, we started generating revenue, we're paying for these capital improvements, we're paying for these, you know, technology improvements today, that wasn't being done before. It was done through, you know, bonding and some other, you know, some other funding mechanisms, but I guess it's been a really, a successful story down there and it would be, you know, I think our intent to run, you know, in a very similar manner here.
And how long would the contract period be and what, do you see the bottom line for the people that are going to be making use of this, the customer? Well, as far as cost increase?
I think we're open to the length of the contract. I think that we initially put in that maybe it's five years. Yeah, okay, it was a 60-month, again, there's some options there. I think that bottom line with the customers are going to see, they're going to see a much cleaner, safer, you know, place to be and park their, you know, vehicles in. You know, the painting, lighting, all that stuff goes a long way, I mean, it's something they're going to notice nearly immediately. Long-term, you know, they're going to see those improvements in the facilities where, you know, I think Brian mentioned it, we're going to take those, we would propose at least to take those dollars, reinvest them into the system, where if you're going to reach the end of life in a facility, you know, five years from now, well, maybe you have that, you know, facility for 25 years. It's very expensive to build brand-new parking garages. I just built, you know, one in Cedar Rapids and it was, you know, 13 million, 22,000 space, something like that. That, you know, that's a, that's a lot of money.
Excuse me, but as the, like, as an example, the downtown parking as it exists now, do you see reconfiguring that and doing it differently as far as parking spaces are concerned? Or if you just were to keep it the same, if you kept that the same, right now it's, Sandy, I think it's what, a quarter for 30 minutes? Is that correct?
It's a quarter minimum.
What do you see it going to?
You know, I'm a little hesitant to just answer that question just directly because we need to gather data to be able to do that. So we need to understand occupancy, we need to understand utilization, we need to understand consumer behavior in this area to be able to make those recommendations. Usually in downtown parking systems, we want to see an on-street rate higher than that of an off-street rate. What that helps us do is manage demand, so it encourages people to use the off-street facilities, but, you know, for convenience factor or whatever it might be, you know, those that need that on-street parking, they can, you know, park in that on-street, but they are going to need to pay for it. And I don't know the parking rates off the top, off the top of my head, but I would say, you know, we need to find a good balance, you know, between the on-street and off-street systems. And really, the only way to do that is to effectively study consumer behavior, get those occupancy studies, get those utilization reports, and then start the outreach process with the downtown business owners and the visitors that are coming to downtown.
Greg?
Thanks. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
Just let me see what Craig has.
I just want to make sure and make it clear, Republic Parking cannot change the parking rates. City Council will have to change those rates. They can make a recommendation to you all, but they will just not be able, that's in our city ordinance, so that'll have to come before you guys make any sort of rate change.
That's a good point, thanks, Craig. Did you have further?
Could, can you, can we leverage your operation in Cedar Rapids with, you know, staffing, technology, operations? Can we help each other out? Can we save money here because you already have a presence close to us?
Absolutely. That's why this contract potential excites me the most because I see cost savings for both organizations. Here's, I guess, a good example. We have a command center built in Cedar Rapids. It took me six years to build that command center, it took me three years to develop the dashboard. Why would we start, it doesn't make any sense to me to start from scratch here, it's extremely expensive, it took me a long time to build it, why can't we, you know, we have some available resources there, why couldn't we leverage some of that? We sat down with our client, well, I've been having these conversations down there, we sat down with our client again today just to make sure that this is a possibility and the short answer is, yes, absolutely. Event parking is a good example. You know, if I have a large event or you have a large event in Waterloo and we don't have the staffing here in Waterloo to handle that event, why couldn't we use some employees from that operation and bring them up here to cover that one event? That way you're not paying insurance and, you know, keeping them, you know, essentially on the books all the time when it's not necessary. You might have to pay for some of those services, you know, back to, you know, the organization in, you know, Cedar Rapids, but it's going to be, you know, minimal when it compares to, you know, the hiring process and going through all that. I mean, it's very expensive to hire people. So, you know, those are just a couple of examples. You know, I think, you know, another idea that we discussed is how cool would it be to have the same pay-by-phone provider? You know, you commute from Cedar Rapids to Waterloo or vice versa, you can pay, you know, for your parking in both communities with the exact same provider. I mean, that's, otherwise, I mean, there's a lot of different, you know, providers out there and, you know, I hear this all the time, "Well, you know, I have to use this app in Cedar Rapids, I have to use this app in Dubuque, I have to use this in another community." It makes sense to me to partner together and, you know, do something more comprehensive, you know, maybe it's the whole, you know, quarter, you know, I don't, I don't know, I mean, I'm just kind of, you know, brainstorming on some of these things, but, again, the efficiencies to be gained, I think the start would be in the tens of thousands of dollars annually. I think, long-term, you're going to be looking easy at the hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Mr. Smith.
Looking at the information you gave us, from a downtown business owner perspective, you know, our restaurants, our coffee shops, that kind of thing, do you have some kind of programs for, you know, short-term pull-up, run and grab something, come back out? Do you have an opportunity for a business owner to basically buy that meter in front of their house or in front of their business or rent for some period of time? I noticed your parking shop, but I just thought, those look more like an hour minimum and I know some of the business owners in downtown have lost customers because they pulled up, ran in and grabbed a cup of coffee and they got a $10 parking ticket and they said they weren't coming back, you know, that kind of thing.
You know, I can't think of any offhand that would just support that, we, but what we could look at, you know, is after doing a study and gathering the information, is does it make sense to do a 15-minute, you know, free parking on this meter own, you know, only or 30-minute? What I always recommend is I let those, you know, shop owners or those that are on those block faces, they set the meter, you know, lengths. I don't necessarily need to set that. Now, I'm going to make a very strong recommendation based on the types of businesses that are there, but, you know, on what, you know, what are the parking best practices? Generally, I see, you know, two hours in the cores of downtown, sometimes one hours and 30 minutes, we do have those. And then as you kind of work your way out in the non-core areas, it's the four-hour, eight-hour type, you know, situations. You know, if there was a, you know, a situation that would come up and you needed a reserve meter, we have a very, I guess, an established meter hooding program that we, you know, we could implement that would reserve it for, you know, whether it needs to be customers for that. There is a cost associated with that, but, you know, there is a way to implement that. Now, there are some other pieces of technology that we have provided in the proposal that would allow us to see that person's been there 15 minutes, you know, but it's, I think it's a little bit, you know, premature to entertain all of those technologies, they're relatively expensive. It makes more sense to me a year or two years down the line that we look at doing something like that here. But, you know, we all, I mean, we can do any number of things, I don't think that we're set by, you know, anything that we've done in any other community. What's best for Waterloo is what we need to do. It's not what I've done in Cedar Rapids, per se, or what we've done in other communities, it's just what's best for your community, you know? We're here acting, you know, on your behalf. You know, if it's going to have the business owners, you know, and your phone's ringing off the hook, let's not, you know, make that decision. Granted, sometimes that has to be made, there's tough decisions that have to be made, but, you know, if it's not going to work out for the business owners, we're going to know that before that decision's made more times than not because we've already talked to them about it. We've held the brown bag lunches, we've held the community outreach sessions. You know, we know really beforehand what the result of that is going to be and what the public wants.
When you took over the operations in Cedar Rapids, did you give preference to current employees or how did you handle that?
We did in certain cases, those who were in the systems, currently in the system. So there was a lot of, the way that it was done, it was not done in a manner that managed demand, so there was flat pricing. And so what we essentially did, said, "If you're a current customer, come to us, here's the price, here's the new prices, come to us, tell us where you want to park. If we don't have a space for you there, we'll put you on a waiting list." Really, essentially, when that was all said and done, we eliminated all the waiting lists, more or less people park where they want to park based on what they want to pay. And it's all demand, demand-based management, so it's, you know, $70 in this ramp because it's, you know, high. So it's, you know, seventy dollars in, in this ramp because it's, you know, high in demand versus fifty dollars in this ramp because it's lower. It's twenty-five dollars in this area because the demand isn't there. And that, you know, continues to move people around. So, you know, we've had a lot of employers also provide stipends to their employees, parking cash-out program. So they just say, here, here's thirty dollars, you park wherever you want, I'm paying a portion of the cost of parking for you. And then if it's, you know, over that thirty dollars, you make that decision to pay that additional cost and park in that area. Or if it's fifteen dollars to park in that area, actually, the employee can, you know, pocket that. That's, you know, extra money for the employee. It's still a cost of doing, you know, business for the, for the company, but it's an expense. So.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I must have misspoke. I was wondering about the, the current city employees that are involved in this department. When you took over Cedar Rapids, did you give preference to those employees as far as hiring the new positions?
We retained some of them, yes. They all had the option to take them over. Some elected not to. I brought over five and I still have four. I just lost my first one to, after thirty-eight and a half years in the park, here in parking or with the city to retirement. So other than that, you know, we've retained every last one of those, you know, employees.
I've just got one quick question for Craig. Craig, the other vendor, are they going to have a presentation too or are we just going to take the numbers and look at those or what, what's the plan there, do you think?
Correct. Yeah, we were not planning on having them present to council on. If you would.
Well, I just, I was wondering, I mean, they're, they're still interested, so we've got two to choose from, correct?
Yeah. And we, we are making a recommendation to you guys for Republic Parking based off a few different things. Dollar being one of them. Management fee is less with Republic Parking than ABM. And we thought they brought in better overall, overall plan to downtown parking to Waterloo.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor. Can I ask one question, Susie? Does this include under the V I D U C?
It currently does not because that is free parking, but it's definitely something that we will, if council chooses to outsource parking, we would utilize Republic to take a look at that to see what our options are.
And this also does not include the airport, correct?
That's correct.
Correct. But the same would definitely go for that.
All right, thank you.
I know there are people here that would like to speak, so the mic is open. Please step forward and hear us your name and address and speak.
Hi, Jim Walsh, JSA Development. Our offices are in the First National Building. Sorry for my voice, I don't know where I went today. I appreciate the council taking a look at this, appreciate the people from Republic coming up. It's a difficult situation, but these are professionals and we should give it a try. The key is to fill as many parking places as we can, make it easier, make it more attractive to park down here. The prices will have to be adjusted. The Cedar Rapids situation evolved. I think the council wanted to get somebody in to start working on it just like you folks do, and that's why they came directly at first with Republic. Later, they found out that it's too cumbersome to operate as a governmental unit, and that's why they put the other entity between the council and the professional parkers. As we do with waterworks and other specialty businesses, a not-for-profit intermediary will serve a purpose and will help to make this an easier job for all of you, including Republic. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
My name's Thomas Hayes. I'm the Business Manager of Glabors Local 353 from 5806 Meredith Drive, Urbankdale, Iowa. I represent the public works employees and the employees that are working at parking lots now. I guess there's a couple of things. Obviously, we're looking at a couple of employees that'll be displaced out of the job, but I'm kind of curious on the revenue of the hundred and sixteen thousand of this year. I don't know what the revenue from last year was. I saw the pictures of the parking lot, of that parking ramp, and it does look pretty disturbing to me, but if you're not reinvesting now, you know, I, I have concerns of the reinvestment once, once you hire a private firm. From the sounds of it, it doesn't sound like it's going to be any cheaper than what it's costing you at this time. So you need to take that into consideration. I mean, a lot of it comes down to, you know, I don't want to cut on the managers, but management of the facility is on the city, all right? So it hasn't been managed properly. It wouldn't look like that if you were reinvesting and keeping it clean. There also used to be four employees there. We're down to two. When you cut out the manpower, obviously, things aren't going to get taken care of properly. So take that into consideration and think about things.
Anyone else right now that would like to ask any questions or have any comments? Obviously, there's nothing on council agenda tonight. This is strictly an informational work session. I expect something to come very soon. Does anybody have anything else right now?
Motion for adjournment, second.
All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you very much. Thank you, gentlemen.
If you read the roll, please.
Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Hart. Mr. Jones.
Here.
Motion approval, agenda is proposed.
Second.
We have a motion, a second for agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We have an agenda. David, if you'd like to take that item.
Yes, motion to receive and file Mayor Clark's recommendation for the following appointment. Janet Deal for Boards and Commissions for Met Transit with an expiration date of 6/30/2017.
And I will second that motion. We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion, questions, comments about this?
Nope.
All right. Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Congratulations, Ms. Deal.
We're to adjourn.
Second, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. Thanks.
Call the Finance Committee meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Ms. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Motion approved. The agenda is proposed and also the minutes of April 27.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign.
Madam Chairperson, I'd like to take those pre-ops.
Thank you.
First, we have fire rescue amount not to exceed one thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars, and that's for preventative maintenance contract for seven dash two eleven cardiac heart monitors. Next, we have human rights, two thousand nine hundred dollars, and that's for the mobilizing to en masse incarceration conference, including speaker honorarium, facility rental and meals for attendees. Next, we have from leisure services, three thousand five hundred dollars, not to exceed three thousand five hundred dollars for additional baseball, softball, uniform pieces to cover missing sizes and increased participation. And finally, we have for planning, amount not to exceed twenty-five hundred dollars, and that's for an independent economic development consultant slash financial advisor to give a presentation on the use of incentives to include TIF in attracting and retaining new growth to a city. Will we approve those five, four items?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have discussion?
I just have a question about the item number four there. What exactly are we going to get for that twenty-five hundred dollars, number one? Number two, isn't that something that our planning and zoning group could give to us? And then number three, I'm wondering where that money's coming from?
Well, one of those things is in your attachments.
Okay, I'll let you read that to me then, if you'd like to.
It's coming from TIFs.
Okay.
Two hundred and fifty dollars from that's number of TIFs.
Okay.
Now, I can't read, I can't tell you the other things. I imagine you could ask Mayor.
Mayor, do you want to answer that? Do you want?
Well, you know, it is about TIF, you know, the use of, I'm not sure exactly how many TIFs were being used or being used to pay for this, but it's about TIFs.
It's about.
It's an educational program to talk about TIFs, and I think use of TIF money is an absolutely.
Yeah, we've, it's certainly legal. We've discussed it with our attorneys. I think Noel was suggesting we split it up among five of them. It's five hundred dollars a piece that way. And actually, we're, we're doing this because there's so, there seems to have been all through the budget process, lots of questions swirling around, why are you doing TIF and why don't you give us the money? And it's not only about that, it's also about economic development. Why do we do it? Why does economic development in some areas of town involve buying a property and tear it down? I mean, we just have been getting a number of questions like that, and I happened to attend a conference put on by the league. And it's too bad all of you couldn't be there because they gave a very good presentation there. I don't think that will be exactly what we're going to talk about because we're, we've suggested some questions to them and I, Noel slipped out of here, but we just thought it might be a good reference and educational piece for all of us to hear from experts in the field who are not just from Waterloo, Iowa, to show, to talk, to be able to talk about what others, what they do in other communities and possibly even other states and why maybe some of these projects are coming to you with the requests that they're coming to you with. So that was the reason we wanted to try this.
And this is open to the public, am I correct?
Absolutely.
So all the people who come every week and talk about TIFs?
Encouraging them to come.
Come every week and come. Them.
And I, I understand, you know, the idea because, yeah, I think we all get phone calls, we all occasionally get letters to the editor about why do we support this, why do we support that? So I appreciate that. I guess I, I just don't fully understand if, you know, why we can't give this presentation ourselves or why, I mean, if you and Noel, and I don't know if Noel's there, but if you were at that training, you know, rather than having to pay them then, because they're coming from Minnesota or someplace, I guess I just don't understand why we can't do it ourselves and educate the folks. It seems like we've got enough talent to do that. That's my.
I think that Noel and I feel like we, we do try to respond to those questions and we, personally, I don't feel that people are accepting or understanding our answers. And so we felt that possibly having other people who do this all the time also, we, we don't want you to think that Noel and I are off in a field wanting to do things. So we thought it might be helpful for our citizens and all of us to get some ideas from people who are experts in this area about why any community might choose to do this instead of only hearing it from your internal staff. And I, I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts about that, but that's where, why the idea is coming to.
No, I mean, that's exactly right, Michelle. And you've said it better than I have, but we have, I think, on two different occasions. I think on two different occasions, the last eight months, ten months, you guys have given TIF updates, TIF classes.
We keep trying.
TIF information. And, you know, it's the old adage that if you bring somebody from out of town with a briefcase, they become the experts. And, and, and that's kind of the situation on this. And I didn't go to the presentation by the league. It was unusual that I was not able to go to that. Michelle did and was very impressed. And I have talked to the people, matter of fact, I talked to them this morning. I, I think it's going to be a wonderful presentation and we're going to all learn a lot as to why we use TIF, why it's appropriate to use TIF, and other financial incentives as we try to attract economic development to the city of Waterloo. And I think it will be good to hear from somebody that that's their business. This is what they do.
Okay, anything else? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. 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 Opposed? Those items pass. We have some budget line item amendments. I move that we approve them. Copies are on file in Ms. Scher's office. And I also move that we pay the bills this week, which are two million, five hundred and one thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars and forty-nine cents, two comma five zero one, comma eight zero seven point four nine.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
May I ask a question of Susie?
Yes, you may.
Susie.
Yes.
I understand the Finance Committee approves a travel request, then it goes to council, gets approved. They approve pre-ops and that shows up in maybe that week or a week later's bills, right? The bills payment.
It could be months.
Or months.
Yeah.
But I, but the budget line item amendments, where do they show up? Is it, does that require council approval? Where does it show up that we approve those? You know what I'm trying to ask?
I'm not sure I do, but you would have, where they show up is in our budget performance reports, and we're about to set a date of hearing for our annual budget amendment, but we'll, and I'll be setting the date next week, I think, for the 26th. And they show up, all the amendments for the whole year show up in there, so.
And we approve one big mass.
There will be a, a public hearing.
Okay.
And the council approves that, but in terms of individual line items, the Finance Committee approves those.
But in, but in the end, the council approves them altogether? In what you're talking about?
I, yes, they were, they're all, I'm trying to think if there's ever a case they don't. I don't think so. I think they all are going to roll up into the main budget amendment. A few don't. We, we don't bring you amendments, for example, that increase one line item expense and decrease another by the same amount. So those within an activity. So those don't necessarily ever show up, but the ones that are coming through the Finance Committee for the most part all will be rolled up into the budget hearing. There is an exception to that. When we approve what we call project budgets, sometimes projects are multi-year things, so we may approve a project budget at the Finance Committee and we may, in the actual budget amendment, only be picking up parts of that because we're doing a project over two or three years. It gets kind of complicated to track all that, but we bring you the portions general, as a general rule, the portions we bring you are what are being spent in the current year at the budget hearing.
Thanks.
Anyone else? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. I move, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. We are adjourned.
A few don't, we, we don't bring you amendments, for example, that increase one line item expense and decrease another by the same amount, so those, within an activity, so those don't necessarily ever show up. But the ones that are coming through the Finance Committee, for the most part, all will be rolled up into the budget hearing. There is an exception to that, when we approve what we call project budgets, sometimes projects are multi-year things, so we may approve a project budget at the Finance Committee, and we may, in the actual budget amendment, only be picking up parts of that, because we're doing a project over two or three years, it gets kinda complicated to track all that, but we bring you the portions general, as a general rule, the portions we bring you are what are being spent in the current year, at the budget hearing.
Thanks.
Anyone else? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. I move, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, we are adjourned.
Gentlemen, and welcome to this Monday, May 4th regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterloo City Council. It's a pleasure to have all of you that are here in our audience tonight, and welcome to those of you also that might be watching on our public access television. Adam Clerk, would you start us by reading the roll, please?
Certainly, Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Lynn?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Walper?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Thank you, if you would all join me, please, in standing for just a moment of silent reflection and prayer, and if you're wearing a cap, if you please remove it. Thank you very much. Our pledge of allegiance tonight is going to be led by Mr. Quentin Hart, our mayor pro tem and ward for councilperson. Mr. Hart, please.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, you may be seated. Come on, computer. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Hart?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed. Also, with the approval of the agenda, I move that we approve the minutes of April 27th regular session.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding the agenda or the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have a proclamation tonight, and I see some familiar friendly fa, well, most of them are friendly. Who's coming up, though? Jim, come on up. Jim, and, yeah, and bring, bring all your fellows with you.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, yeah, just come through the door, please. Come on up, just kinda gather around me here. Even you. I was looking at you, you knew who I was talking about, didn't you?
That's what I did.
Jim, you hang out with these folks on a regular basis?
No, not on a regular.
I'm sorry, okay.
Once a year, a couple times.
Andy, how are you? Good to see you.
Hi.
Okay, this City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation is for Letter Carriers Food Drive Day, whereas every year on the second Saturday in May, letter carriers across the country collect non-perishable food as part of the nation's largest one-day food drive, distributing the donations to local food banks. And whereas the letter carriers stamp out Hunger Food Drive is just one example of how letter carriers work to make a difference in the lives of those that they serve, as more than a billion pounds of food have been collected since 1991, when the pilot program started. And whereas we would like to recognize all letter carriers for their hard work and their commitment to their communities, all of the food collected in our community stays in our community, and we support the carriers' efforts to help those in need in our community. Now therefore, I, Buck Clark, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, do hereby proclaim Saturday, May 9th, 2015, as Letter Carriers Food Drive Day, and encourage the citizens of our community to support the food drive by placing non-perishable food items in or near your mailbox for pickup on Saturday, May 9th. Together, we can help all of those in need. Jim, I'm gonna give that to you, and let somebody say something, is that you?
Yeah.
Okay, very good, very good.
All right, my name's Jim Johnson, and we, first of all, we'd like to thank you for this, uh, occasion, our special day that we're gonna have this Saturday, and the letter carriers will be out with a lot of our union brothers, and we'd like everyone to put their non-perishable foods in the morning by their mailbox, and all the letter carriers and our volunteers that'll be there will be there to pick 'em up. So, we hope for a great turnout, as there is a huge need every year for non-perishable foods and so forth, and it keeps growing every year. So, we encourage everyone to have their food by their door for us to collect. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim, and thanks to all you guys for what you do every day, sincerely. Okay, thank you. All right, I also would like to take this opportunity, I don't see Dave here, I bet he got a call, but it was our, today was the day that we recognized our May Team Member of the Month, and many of you that, that watch or come all the time know that once a month, they recognize somebody, some city employee for just doing a great job. Today, I was able to recognize Dave Meiser, the Waterloo Fire Rescue, as our May Team Member of the Month, and went over to the station, and he said he was gonna be here tonight, so with him not being here, I'm assuming that he probably got a call. So, anyway, thanks to Dave for just doing a great job. Dave rides an animal, an ambulance out of 331, on 331, out of Station 1, and is, just does a great job mentoring young ambulance folks and so forth, so congratulations to Dave, and thank you, Dave, for doing what you do. All right, moving on.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
I move that we receive, place, on file, and approve the consent agenda, items 1A through B14. Also, with the approval of the consent agenda, I move that we make our bills payment, which will be read by our Finance Chair.
All right.
The bills this week are $2,501,807.49, 2,501,807.49.
Second.
I hope that includes electric bill.
Yeah. Are there any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda, counsel? Adam Clerk, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good, the motions carry. Janet Deal, or Janet, are you here tonight? Janet, stand up, there we go. Hi, Janet, how are you? First of all, thank you, Janet is being appointed to our Met Transit Board, and as we, Janet, we don't know what we could do without commissioners and board members and people that give of their time and talents to help out the city, so it's an important board, you will stay busy on that, and thank you very much for stepping forward, we appreciate it that you, that you have done so, so thank you, appreciate it. And we also have a new employee with us tonight, Amy Garrettson has been appointed to the Youth Pavilion Manager at the Waterloo Center for the Arts, so Amy, if you'd stand up, you are standing up, thank you very much, you look like a kid yourself, so you should fit right in with all the kids down there, thank you, that should be a fun job, I hope we have a long and prosperous relationship, so thank you for coming on board, welcome. All righty, and both of you folks are welcome to stay and watch the council meeting and experience it. Little civics, what if you don't want to offend anybody? So, anyway, there we go. Okay. Resolutions, let's do the first three, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Item number two is adopting a resolution authorizing Mid-America Energy to install LED streetlights on 16-foot poles on the northwest corner of Wax Wing Drive in Falcon Ridge, the northwest corner of Partridge Lane in Falcon Ridge, the northwest corner of West Shawless Road in Falcon Ridge, all in the fourth edition of Ottoman Heights, and the dead end of Norris Court. Item number three is a motion approving change order number two for a net decrease of $7,752 for the fiscal year 2012 Lincoln Elementary Safe Routes to School Project, contract number 805, and authorize the Mayor and City Clerk to execute said document. And item number four is adopting a resolution approving completion of project and recommendation of acceptance of work performed by Veeth Construction Corp. of Cedar Falls, Iowa, at a total cost of $147,137.20 in conjunction with the fiscal year 2012 Lincoln Elementary School Safe Routes to School Project Contract Number 805.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding two, three, or four?
Yes, sir.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Yes.
I get those motions carry, next three, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution preliminarily approving plan specification form of contract, et cetera, and setting date of bid opening as May 21st, 2015, and date of public hearing as May 26th, 2015, for the fiscal year 2015 Sidewalk Repair Program, Zone 5 and Trail Repairs, Contract Number 878, instruct City Clerk to publish notice of plan specifications, form of contract, et cetera. And number six, a resolution to concur with the determination of Community Planning and Development Director that the proposed change to the approved site plan for VGM Incorporated in a C2CZ conditional zoning district is minor and shall be approved as a minor site plan amendment for a 60,000-square-foot four-story addition to their existing office building located at 1104 through 1111 West San Marnon Drive. And number seven, a resolution awarding bid for two one-ton pickup trucks with dump box and plow package to Bill Colwell Ford in the amount of $97,314 for the street department.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lynn.
Noel, on number six, what, what is the minor change that was made?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director, in one moment, just wanna say, may the fourth be with you.
You've worn that one out, Noel.
No, you have.
So, you really did send that out. I couldn't resist it. I thought it was a hacker. Their original site plan showed a specific layout of buildings, it's a conditionally zoned site, so it's a specific to a site plan. At the same time, the zoning ordinance gives us the ability to have small changes, what we believe to be minor, within that original site plan layout. Their original site plan showed 185,000 square feet of total office buildings out there. With this addition, they'll be at about 118,000 square feet. And again, it's all within that originally approved office complex area, so we believe that even though the building's in a slightly different location than the original site plan, we believe it's a minor change and should go through this process.
If, if it wasn't a minor change, would it have go to Planning and Zoning Commission?
Correct. It'd go to Planning and Zoning Commission, then come back to council for a full site plan approval.
The, the site plan you sent to us shows parking on the San Marnon right-of-way.
Correct. As part of the development agreement that was approved, we will be vacating a portion of San Marnon Drive, so that they can add more parking up front. They've been working specifically with engineering and traffic, and Eric can speak more if, if you need it, but they've been working specifically with them for a layout that we believe will work both for the city to provide right-of-way needs for San Marnon, utility provisions in that area, as well as allowing them to have some of that excess right-of-way for some more parking on that north side of their campus.
When you say vacate, you mean vacate and convey?
Vacate, sell, and convey.
But remember, we have to follow 30623.
That is correct, we are following that process.
Thank you.
Further comments? Madam Clerk, please.
I will just note for the resolution awarding the one-ton pickup trucks, two weeks ago, I read the bid tab for all of those, Bill Colwell actually had two options, and I inadvertently missed one of them on their bid. It was submitted timely, it was actually on the exact same packet as the other one, and I just missed it. So, the second, the first option was $50,383, which was the low bid of the three that I read, but they also had a second option for $48,657, so I just wanted to make sure that that was noted for the record. And now, I'm gonna do roll call. Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes, on five and seven, and abstain on item six because I am employed there.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Very good, motions carry. Mr. Hart, could you do eight and nine, please, together?
Mr. Mayor, item move to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time, and ordinance amending the 2008 Traffic Code by amending Section 554, no parking here to Drive and Street North Side of the 1,000 block, and that's for, in ordinance amending the 2008 Traffic Code by adding subsection 1A and Street to Section 554, no parking here to Drive. And number nine, I move to, move to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time, and ordinance amending the 2008 Traffic Code by repealing subsection 1, Ankeny Street West Side in the 200 block of Section 576, no parking, 11:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m., for ordinance amending the 2008 Traffic Code, repealing subsection 1, Ankeny Street West Side in the 200 block of Section 576, no parking, 11:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions regarding either of those items, eight or nine? Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Motions carry.
Mr. Mayor, for both those items, I move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Very good, the motions carry. Item number 10, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion, receive, file, and consider for the third time, and ordinance adding Section 7 Regulation of roadside memorials to Chapter 1, Streets, sidewalks, and public ways, Title 7 Public Ways and Property of the 2007 Code of Ordinances, and adopt ordinance on regulation of roadside memorials.
Second.
Very good, there is a motion and a second, and I see we have somebody that would like to speak. Mr. Felkey, go ahead, give us your name and address a little closer, for the record.
Thank you. Dixon Stolke, 421 Belmont Avenue. You know, government doesn't always have to do what makes the most sense, but in this case, I think you should. It would cost a lot less to just leave these memorials alone than it would to take 'em down and catalog 'em and transport 'em and store 'em and destroy them, and I think just mowing around 'em for a few seconds a pop would be a lot cheaper. Besides, you know, marking out places where fatal accidents have occurred is a great idea. It's excellent information for a responsible driver to have. And the third thing is they, they do, the roadside memorials remind us of love, the existence of love, not just the love for the ones that have been lost, but my thoughts when I see a roadside memorial turn to home, to my loved ones at home that I'm lucky enough to still have, and I'd like to get back there, and so I tend to drive a little more carefully. They add an element of grace and beauty that no other art form, no grouping of graves can equal. They bring depth and richness to our lives, to the culture of our city, and strength to the fabric of our community. And you'd like to, to take all this away? No, spend extra money to take this away. I, I don't think that makes a lot of sense. So, I think what makes the most sense here is to wait. Another thing, I guess, to try to take this away and do it without the proper procedure, sorry for the stammering here, I think what makes the most sense is to, to go through the proper procedure, which would give you the time to know for sure that there aren't more people like me that would like to see them stay. Right now, as far as I know, all that you really know is a few, a vocal few, who aren't as fortunate as I am to be able to see the beauty in these, have requested that they be taken down. I think that's just wrong, and I think the most sensible thing to do is to wait. Find out if there's more than just one person that likes them. Take the time, make a few phone calls to constituents, see if they, see if people really want 'em down. I think they're good for the community, I think they're lovely to look at most of the time, and they're useful, and, and I think a necessary part of our life. So, please take the time to consider it again and do, and go through the proper procedures. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Yes, sir, please give us your name and address.
Larry Levens, 411 Vinton Street. And I guess I agree with every word that he said. I've been busy the last couple Mondays, I rearranged my schedule to come tonight, because I was surprised that nobody had come and talked about this, because everybody I talk to thinks it's kinda ridiculous to take 'em all down, and the lack of compassion, I mean, you know, you see all the time on the news, almost every day, somewhere in this country or in the world, where someone's been killed, or there's, you know, a memorial of some kind, and people come and put the flowers there and so forth, and some of them are there a long time. You know, part of what the problem is, maybe, in, in the world, is lack of compassion, and it just seems like we're just making our government more sterile and more... And it just seems like we're just making our government more sterile and more clinical and more, you know, gotta do, you know, politically correct and so forth, as opposed to what is the best thing for people. And I really, you know, I can see where maybe a couple of them have gotten kind of big and, and might be a little problem mowing, but maybe you can set up some kind of rules for sixty-day use of it, or have it posted in a standard-type form where they can put flowers on, or, or use a utility pole, or the street corner sign or something that then wouldn't actually be in the way of mowing. There's a lot of possibilities. Instead of just cut and dry, we're gonna end it. I think that they're very useful. I don't know how many of you remember back when we were younger, some of us, and the state put the white crosses along the primary road system. And it was a safety issue, to promote safety, which is what these memorials do, because whenever I see one, I re, you know, I remember that somebody was, you know, killed here, whatever the situation was, and it reminds drivers to be careful and to drive more carefully. And I think it might have been when the interstate system really got complete that they stopped putting the white crosses because they didn't put them on the interstate system. But, you know, they were on the primary road system before that, so. I, I would like you to reconsider, or, or maybe not pass it for the third time tonight, and think about some of this, and like, like the previous gentleman said, get a little more input from people that maybe didn't come over here and, and say something about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levens.
Joan Toms, Riverside Drive, and I think the monuments are nice, but some of them have been there for five years, all over by John Deere's, and I think there should be a limit how long they're there. Thank you.
Thanks, Joan. All right, is there anyone else that would like to speak to counsel? Counsel, this is the third and final reading. Do, do you have comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
In the interest of discussion that we've had in the last couple of meetings on this issue, I had understood what Councilman Welper was objecting to, and I, I wanted to get another opinion, and so I had asked Chris Wendlin if he would give his opinion, no slight to City Attorney Dave Zellifer at all. I just wanted him to take a look at it. And so Chris took a look at it, and I just asked him to give me, you know, what he thought of it, and he sent back, and I gave counsel a copy of his email to me, and then his suggested changes. And having done that and received those back, I'm, I'm still committed to passage of this ordinance for the third reading tonight, especially given the fact that, you know, what, what I had received back, I feel was even more stringent than, than what we had come up with, with City Attorney Zellifer. And the other thing was, and I know that Councilman Welper will correct, correct me if I'm wrong, but the wording, one, one of the words was of particular concern to me, and that was when it came down to removal by the police or code enforcement personnel at Shell, he, he preferred to have the word Shell. Well, even in the second opinion that I got here, the wording remains, may, remove. And with that, I, I would, I would like to add to some of the comments that were made that during this process, one of the things that we did have was a meeting with five people who had had dear ones lost along the roadside. And during the reports that we had in committee, I, I reported back that the majority of those people that showed up for that graciously on their, on their own part, and I appreciate that very much, was that we need to decide something and just make that decision. And one of the points that, that hasn't been brought up here is that some of the dear ones, of those that have lost relatives or friends along the roadway, don't want to be reminded of it. And I know that that may be a minor opinion to, to some people, but it's also one of those other opinions that were, that are out there, that are part of the loved, lost ones that I had contact with. So I want that included in, in this discussion as well, with that. That's it.
Okay. Procedurally, Mr. Morrissey, the, the reading tonight is to pass the third, pass for the third time an ordinance that you submitted initially.
Yes, and I'm not changing that.
And you're not changing?
No.
You're not, you're not indicating any changes?
I'm just saying that this additional information I went out and procured
Okay.
for the sake of Councilman Welper.
But there's, but there's no, there's no change into the original ordinance that you?
No, none whatsoever.
Are there further comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
This is, this ordinance has not been rushed at all. This is, we've been working on this for about a year. I know there's been at least two articles in the paper talking about it in, in depth. I have gotten a number of email comments in support of removal. So I, you know, I have heard a lot on both sides. We had discussed the possibility of having them remain for periods of time, and it really came down to the opinions of, really to make it fair and uniform, it just had to be they're not allowed at all.
Okay. Further comment, Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Mayor, I just mentioned also, you know, some of the neighborhood associations, this topic's come up the last six months, and I think we're all on the council very empathetic of, of those that are supportive of having the roadside memorials, but the challenge becomes, again, managing them. And, you know, what I hear is the ones that kind of get let go, they just don't present the best appearance for the city, and I know that's certainly not all of them, but then we get into that treating everybody differently, and I think that this is probably just the right course to follow, and, you know, and I, I think then it becomes incumbent upon us to enforce the ordinance.
Further? Mr. Welper?
There isn't much more I can say other than the fact that I wish that this had gone through the ordinance committee. Code enforcement, code enforcement was caught off guard with this. They had numerous questions that they wanted to ask, and they're being bypassed on this, so I'm pretty much speaking for code enforcement at this point.
Further?
Just, Mr. Mayor, just for the record, I'm not in favor of taking these away or giving people the opportunity. So I'm not just sensitive to the comments that were made earlier from our audience. I actually am in agreement with them as well, so I just want to state that for the record.
Thanks. Further? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote on the third reading, please.
Mr. Hart?
No.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
No.
The motion carries for the third time. Item number eleven, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Item number eleven is a new application for Class C liquor license for the Sunday sales for Club Empire, three thirteen West Fifth Street, with an expiration date of four twenty-one, two thousand and sixteen, and that comes to us with a staff recommendation of denial.
Second. Okay, there's a motion and a second. I'm sure there's comments.
I guess I'd like to hear, you know, the reasons for the denial first.
The reason for the denial is the exact same reason that it was recommended for denial the last time with the police department. The applicant has changed their application, but they did not change all of their corporate documents to eliminate the other names that were on them. So they, they still have applicants on corporate documents, which would show that they have, stand to have financial gain from the business, and it's important that applicants list everybody who stands to have financial gain from the business, and that they can be thoroughly vetted, and without that full disclosure, we can't do that, so.
The police department is... Does it have an application issue more than anything else at this stage?
At this stage, yes.
Thank you.
Further? Mr. Morrissey?
Yes, Suzy, the question I have is, in the attachment, it speaks to a background check made by, must, I think Sergeant Holsher on April seventeenth, and contacted Iowa Department of Revenue, spoke with Leanne Boswell, State of Club Empire, located at three thirteen West Fifth Street, had a valid State of Iowa. Is this the document that you're referring to?
That is the document that was given to us with the recommendation of denial, yes.
Do we have that document that we can look at?
Which document are you talking about?
The April third State of Iowa sales tax permit.
I don't know if the police department obtained it, or if they just spoke with the state and were told whose name was on it, that, I don't know.
I'm, I'm just wondering if there, I mean, because we had this brought up to us before, if there was some kind of confusion, and it was approved, and I, I just would like to see a document rather than just a report saying that there is a document. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Mr. Tralka, do you have any information that could help clarify this?
The antroka, Director of Safety Services, I do not, but I could find out Sergeant Holsher, if it was an email that he exchanged with the state. I doubt if we have the actual document. I assume it was a telephone call or email correspondence.
So the second question I have is, does Mr. Delane Moorhead know what he needs to correct?
Yes.
He's been informed?
Absolutely, on multiple occasions by multiple people.
And do you know, has he denied that this is the way it is? Is he saying that that's, information's incorrect, or?
I would say we've gotten conflicting stories.
How do we get it? I, I mean, in order, to me, it, Mr. Mayor, in order to make a yes or no vote on this, I would like to have the appropriate document in front of me, and I don't.
Okay, Mr. Morrissey, and I don't know if, if we can, I, I'm, I'm assuming that we can get those hard copies for you. This is clearly an issue where you, you have one document that says something different than the information that's provided on the other document, which is clearly a violation of the liquor law application. You know, I, I don't, I'm assuming that we can get a physical copy of those documents. Ms. Scherz, would you disagree with that?
I honestly have no idea. We've never gotten sales tax permits from the state, and that's the document that's still showing the other individual's name on it. I don't know if, what the police department, I, I'm assuming, but I could be misassuming that the police department just calls and confirms that their information is correct with the state, and when they're not. I know the original document that we got was a lease, and the other individual's name was on the lease, and when we denied it based on that, they just changed the name on the lease and took it off. But my understanding is that when the police department still checked into it, none of the corporate documents that are filed with the state, which are not in our possession, but they're filed with the state for their sales tax permit and all of that sort of stuff, none of that ever changed.
Okay, but I am wondering, being as that this vote is coming so close, one to the other, if this State of Iowa sales tax permit, if that application was done before we denied it, and it was approved, and just that the chronology of this is such that it's really all messed up, that's the concern I have here.
Well, then we would still need to deny it, and they would have to fix all of their stuff like they were instructed to do, and bring it back to you correctly.
Okay, thanks.
Further comments?
I'm gonna abstain like I did last week.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Quick question, a yes is to deny?
A yes is to approve.
A yes is to approve. A no is to deny. Ms. Cole?
No.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Lynn?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mr. Welper?
No.
Mr. Hart?
Stay.
Very good. The motion fails. The license does not pass. Ladies and gentlemen, that's the end.
One question then.
Yes, sir.
So Mr. Moorhead will be informed of this, and he'll know what he needs to do in order to?
Correct. The state sends him a letter of how they can appeal it and all of that, and they could certainly have everything corrected, they could certainly appeal it to the state.
Okay, thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, that's the end of our regularly scheduled business tonight. It's time for oral presentations. If there's anyone that would like to speak to mayor, council, now's the time to do so. Come to the microphone and give us your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just real, real quickly, wanted to mention that tonight we are welcoming our newest neighborhood association, Liberty Park Neighborhood Association. They're having their first meeting tonight at six thirty at the Unity Presbyterian Church at Mitchell and Hammond Avenue. I think that geography, I know Perry Goodman was here earlier, but he's gone, I think that geography is Mitchell, Hammond, Eleventh, and Baltimore, I believe. But anyhow, they've got their first meeting tonight at six thirty, and I'm sure they'd love to have all their neighbors come out.
Thanks. Yes, sir.
David Dreyer, thirty-one forty-five West Fourth Street. I'll try to make this as brief as I can. I have four items. I, I paid the money to get a planning and zoning for two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and nineteen. I don't see anything in there on the initial dollars and cents we're gonna spend for Johnstone Supply, Legion, K W W L, and V G M. The projects that are in there, where are we supposed to get those projected finances from, since we've already given four hundred, four hundred, seven hundred and fifty, keep adding up the numbers? Where's that money supposed to come from for those fridge projects for two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and nineteen? I also go down to the recycle center. There's a grinder sitting there. It was down there the last time I did some recycle, and it's still sitting, not doing anything, and the pile's getting bigger. Brought this up last year, and we said we were buying a new one or whatever. I, I also went by V G M after the council meeting and noticed that the fence was up for construction, there was already dirt moved, et cetera. So that makes me think that this was already a cut and dried thing before it ever came to the council. I understand also through the grapevine that it had city approval from, from the planning and zoning. So was it just a stupid thing to bring it in front of the council because it was already gonna happen? They already had dude moved, they already had fence up, they already had contractors on the site. The other thing I, I just was thinking about was the application for the Club Enterprise. I've heard you guys say, different times, Mayor Clark, that, well, we've taken this, we've, we've denied it, and they've taken it to, to the state, and the state approves the thing, and we spend money to go ahead and fight this. Why'd you deny it? Thank you.
Okay. David, I would like you, if you would, what you paid for and what you received, I think, was a copy of last year's C I P. Is that a request?
Drew, Drew, ninety.
Well, that's a five-year, what I'd like you to do, I'd like you to, and I'd ask Noel, please, to spend two or three minutes with you after the meeting, to meet with you and try to explain how that C I P works and how we do those large projects. Unless you work with that every single day, with you just getting a piece of paper and looking at it, you're not going to be able to understand that. I'd like you to spend a couple of minutes with Noel. The grinder, what, just let me finish, please. The grinder, we never said we were gonna buy a new one. We rented one last year to help us catch up when our old one broke down. That one works, and as time and weather permits, we will use it to try to maintain order in that pile. V G M Construction started at their own peril. We had nothing to do with that. They started without our, our permission. If the council would have denied that, they could have chosen to move forward without the incentives, or they could have stopped. That would have been their, their issue. So I forgot, you, you had one other one, I forgot what it was, so. Oh, yeah, the, the denial of the, the liquor license, and that's an important point. My comments that I make are when council denies liquor licenses with no legal reason. When the neighbors don't want liquor stores there is not a legal reason to deny it, and they get overturned on a regular basis. The last one that we denied will get overturned, and they'll get their license. This one, there is actually a legal reason to deny it. The application and the corporate structure are different. It gives us legal reason to deny it. Thank you.
That was a draw up at the end of the...
Is there further?
Just a minute. Just want to add, great program this weekend at Lafayette Park. The chief fire, Chrissy Jones, had a program to celebrate neighborhood and community, so great program this weekend. Motion to receive and file oral comments and adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Agreed.
All in favor?